Welcome to your city commission meeting. Please turn off or silence your cell phones during the meeting. The meetings are televised every day on channel two at 6:00 PM and midnight and available for your viewing pleasure on YouTube. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order. If we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is the proclamation for Black History Month. And whereas the city of Leavenworth is proud to recognize February as Black History Month, this is a time for all of our citizens to learn, reflect, and honor the history and contributions of Black Americans to our city, state, and country. And whereas we continue to work towards fulfilling our principles that all people are created equal and have equal rights to fulfill their dreams. And whereas our city shares the rich history and the legacy of the Buffalo Soldiers and their brave contributions towards fulfillment of our nation's promise. And whereas Black History Month is a time to engage in learning that creates greater understanding of the importance of diversity and unity. And whereas the celebration of Black History Month is a positive way of recognizing the culture and history of Black Americans as vital to the core beliefs and values of this society. And whereas in honor of Black History Month, community celebrations as well as educational and historical activities have been planned. Now therefore, I Holly Pittman, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, hereby proclaim February 2025 as Black History Month. Yay! We got what we got planned and maybe talk about Saturday? Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Usually people respond with good evening. It's okay. My name is Locky Evans. I'm the Leavenworth Community Service Organization President. I took over two years ago from Ron Koetsch. And on Saturday, first of February, at 5:00 PM at the Riverfront Community Center, we will have our 13th Annual Black History Month banquet and celebration. It is full of excitement, music, and entertainment. I don't want to give too much information, but we have youth performing, we have singing going. Actually, we're going to highlight three African-Americans and labor because that's the theme. And then from religious community leaders who are going to present that. And then we're going to have the Mayor of Attleson, Rochelle Young. She's our guest speaker this year. And she has done a phenomenal job in Attleson and has roots from Leavenworth City, from Bethel AME Church. So we invite everybody to come out. Tickets for adults are usually $50. If you're a child 12 and under, it's 25. And for our seniors that are 60, excuse me, 80 and over, we've got the senior discount. We want to see everybody out there. We have a maximum of 200 people. So we've still got tickets left to sell. If you want to come, you can either email us and we've got tickets out there with ticket brokers throughout the committee at the Riverfront Community Center or Bethel AME. Or you can contact myself, which is...
There you go.
I'm Locky Evans and my email is locknkey, L-O-C-K-N-K-E-Y, 329@gmail.com.
You didn't mention the food.
Yeah, food is best.
Yes.
Food is the best.
So it's a soul food dinner, which has all, if you want to gain some weight, you're going to gain some weight. So fried chicken and brisket and acronian cheese and sweet potatoes and all the great things, greens. So bring your appetite, bring your enjoyment, and after living, you can dance if you want to get your shape on.
Awesome. Can I get what else?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. So the first is consideration of our previous meeting minutes from January 14th at our regular meeting. Can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept the minutes from January 14, 2025, regular meeting.
All right. Well, we begin voting with Commissioner Hingala.
Aye.
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 All right. Motion passed.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Martin's online, sorry.
That's all right.
I almost forgot about you. I'm so sorry. Motion carries. All right. Next up is second consideration ordinances. Let's start with the, oh, okay, these are those ones that we went through last week. Okay. So we'll start with the ordinance number 8256, a rezone of 711 Ottawa Street from the Office Business District to High Density Single Family Residential District.
Mayor, what I would recommend here is Kim will give a kind of general update on all of them and then you can just roll call them.
Okay. Perfect. Wait, roll call individually?
Yeah, you're going to have to individually roll call them, but I don't think we need to present each one.
Okay.
Yeah, so these are the items from our last meeting where they're applying for two family dwelling units. We would have to consider the rezonings first before the special use permits. There have been no changes since last meeting.
Okay. Do you guys have any questions with Kim while she's here about? Okay. All right, well, let's start. So we'll go ahead and start with the number 8256. So it's a roll call vote. We'll go ahead and start with Commissioner Martin. It's a roll call vote.
Commissioner Martin, aye.
Bowder, yes.
Pittman, yes.
Wilson, yes.
Hingala, yes.
Okay. Motion passes 5-0. Okay, the second ordinance is number 8257. That's a rezone of 701 Potawatomi Street from Office Business District to High Density Single Family Residential District. We'll start a roll call vote with Commissioner Hingala.
Commissioner Hingala, yes.
Wilson, yes.
Pittman, yes.
Bowder, yes.
Martin, yes.
Ordinance number 8258, special use permit to allow a two-family dwelling at 711 Ottawa Street. This is a roll call vote. We'll start with Commissioner Martin.
Commissioner Martin, aye.
Bowder, yes.
Pittman, yes.
Wilson, yes.
Hingala, yes.
All right. Motion carries 5-0. The next one is ordinance number 8259, special use permit to allow a two-family dwelling at 701 Potawatomi Street. It's a roll call vote. We'll start with Commissioner Hingala.
Commissioner Hingala, aye.
Wilson, yes.
Pittman, yes.
Bowder, yes.
Martin, yes.
All right. Motion carries. Next ordinance is 8260. It's a special use permit to allow a two-family dwelling at 724 Osage Street. We'll start with, it's a roll call vote, we'll start with Commissioner Martin.
Martin, yes.
Bowder, yes.
Pittman, yes.
Wilson, yes.
Hingala, yes.
All right. Motion carries 5-0. And then finally, the last one is ordinance number 8261. That's a special use permit to allow a two-family dwelling at 724 Potawatomi Street. We'll start the roll call vote with Commissioner Hingala.
Aye, yes. Hingala.
Wilson, yes.
Pittman, yes.
Bowder, yes.
Martin, yes.
Okay. Motion carries. We did it. Thank you. All right. New business. This is public comment. We'll start with public comment. Do we have anybody today?
We have two signed up. First up is Mr. Ray Hillebrand.
Okay. Just a reminder that public comment is limited to three minutes and no action will be taken by the commissioners on public comment items. Please state your name and your address.
My name is Ray Hillebrand, 1345 Cheyenne Street. Back again because the city continues to want to prosecute me for something I don't have. I already talked to three of the commissioners up there and they agreed I don't have a child. But my question is, I want to direct them to the city manager. We've had conversations since November through emails and others. The city is in violation of its own ordinance with shipping containers at the service center and other city property. The water department's also in violation of the city ordinance with shipping containers down there at 500 Block of Cherokee Street. So why is the city not obeying its ordinance violation or having the water department violate theirs? Or in the case of the Justice Center, why is there shipping containers at the Justice Center over there also? They're all in city zoning areas, so why are they not being removed?
I don't, I don't, I don't think he has to answer that, but...
So this is your opportunity to speak.
Right.
I will continue because I've got a little bit more.
You have two, you have two more times.
Where do I get this information? I mean, the city's in violation of the same laws they're prosecuting me for. So how can that work? You're the city commission. And I know three of you, I talked to three of you, you all agree I do not have a shipping container on my property. But you have no power over the rest of the city and a city employee can just stand up and make something up. And by golly, I'm spending money because I got it defended. And this is just not right. So, and then if I do ask a question because the city is in violation, you don't have to answer it. You know, give me a break. I mean, I'm not a criminal here. I'm just a resident trying to live just like everybody else. And the city has just taken on a job of trying to make my life miserable. And I would like something done about it other than to have to go into a courtroom to try to convince a judge that I don't have something I don't have.
Thank you for coming tonight, sir.
That's it, huh? Just roll right on off. Nobody, nobody has to count to the citizens for anything, do they? Nothing.
Okay. Do we have someone else?
Yes, we do. Mr. Louis Clum.
All governments seem to conceal their data. School boards, cities, counties, the state government, federal government. It's a shame because the people need to know what's going on in life. And I mentioned that before, the governments need to work together. They don't work together. They blame this one for prosecute taxes, this one for the sales tax, this one for this, this one for that. It's a shame. The school district, as I mentioned before, down $5 million, $10,000, uh, 10,000% in two years for kids. Schools are as important to you, whether you know it or not, as anything else you do. And maybe you don't like the kids, I don't know, but I love the kids. Girls lost a bad basketball game the other day and I really felt bad about that. Leavenworth is now renting to non-military. Oh, that's a nice minute. Renting to non-military. And we get no funds as far as the law or taxes. And where do the kids that are living up there, where do they go to school? Do they go to the support level schools? Are they entitled to do that? I wouldn't think so. Uh, a, uh... Last four things. I just got back and forth and said 70 miles an hour. I said, well, I'll go 79. It's like I was sitting skilled. You guys, you want to have more people killed down here? Because I just saw two cars go through red lights. You better do something. Maybe you don't care about people getting killed. I don't know. Some of the things that you're not familiar with. Airplane drops. I'm not familiar with everything. That airplane at American or United, it went down 180 feet, came up 200 feet. Well, they ought to know what it's like to go down 500 feet up there by North Korea. Then you know what life's about. And that goes down in about 10 seconds. Music. Who brought that up? On channel two. Good music again. I love it. I watch it on channel two all the time, just for the music. Soldiers. That would be nice when they're out there because there's a lot of people that can't go to the meeting or meet with the soldiers or the museum aspect because they have a bad, and that would be good for those people. And last but not least, you'd be surprised how many people don't like Camp Leavenworth. What happened to Buffalo Bill? Bill Cogan. These are famous people. Camp Leavenworth. I would change that and enjoy it. I thank you for your time and do something, find out what, whose main tax is what's for them. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to general items. Consider transient merchant permit waiver for Dark River Artifact Show at the Riverfront Community Center.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, before you this evening, your consideration is a request for a transient merchant permit waiver to the Riverfront Community Center on April 11th and 12th for an artifact rocks and fossils collector show. This is an annual event and got some stats. So last year's event had about 400 visitors, 120 tables with displayers from nine different states, and the vast majority of those displayers stayed over the weekend here in town and stayed at our hotels, eating at our restaurants. So always great to see that. Items for sale at the show will be strictly artifact and fossil related to include things like display cases, carved walking sticks, and art depicting Native American life. The city code does prohibit transient merchant permits on city property, which includes the Riverfront Community Center, but the code also allows the city commission to grant waivers of that. So all fees for the use of the facility will still be applicable and permits would still apply. This request is simply to allow the sale to be held on city property. So tonight, the request is before you to grant the waiver request for the transient merchant permit. Myself is here along with the Riverfront Community Center manager Tammy Metzger and advocate Mr. John Frye if you have any questions for us.
Okay. Thank you. Commission, you have any questions? Anyone, anything you want to say? You're there. Is that ready?
I had someone asking some questions I wasn't prepared for. I brought a little write-up. Some of the information that should be used was from the year prior. This is for last year. The 2024 Dark River Artifact Show was our third annual gathering sponsored by the Kansas Archaeological Society. The collectors from seven states including Illinois, South Dakota, Nebraska, Iowa, Oklahoma, Missouri, and Kansas brought their artifacts, rocks, fossils, and bones of mammoth, dire wolf, short-faced bear, giant ground sloth, and many more. Displays covered over 120 tables, many of which had free items available for kids. Experts were available to ID bones and made of American artifacts. For the first time last year, we had the addition of dinosaur bones, including a Dratosaurus skull that is the only one that's ever been found. Additionally, a nappy area is available for viewing where people can watch and learn how arrowheads and Native American tools are made. We had over 250 guests from the public.
That's awesome.
I also have last year's flyer in case somebody wants to see these sort of things that are in the show.
Can I ask when you have this year's flyer, that you send it to the commission?
Yes.
Okay. Cool. Any questions?
Sounds good.
Commissioner Martin, do you have any questions? I don't want to leave them out. All right. Well, if that, we can go ahead and make a motion to take a vote.
I move approval of the transient merchant permit waiver request for the Dark River Artifact Show at the Riverfront Community Center for April 11th and 12th, 2025.
Second.
All right. Okay, we'll begin voting with Commissioner Hingala.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move on to bids, contracts, and agreements. First up, the Consider Award for Contract for Camp Leavenworth 2025 Event Management. Hi, Penny.
Mayor and Commissioners, the city is once again planning for the annual Camp Leavenworth Festival. The dates are Friday, September 26th and Saturday, September 27th. They were listening correctly in the policy report, so that's a note of update. The item before you tonight is to consider the contract with O'Neil Events and Management to manage the festival. I have owner Kelly O'Neil Wenzel via phone to answer questions and provide additional information. O'Neil has experience managing the event in previous years. They also have experience at large events, as we know, Boulevardia, Irish Fesh, as well as Chiefs and Royals parades and festivities. They have extensive contacts with regional vendors to obtain best pricing and ensure coverage. They have experience booking headliner music groups and addressing their onsite needs. They're also members of IFIA, the International Festivals and Events Association, and they stay up to date as active members on emerging trends for festivals, including increased security measures and continuing on with fewer volunteers. They have addressed all of that details for the past several years, and they will continue to be available as we gain stakeholder feedback to help the event adapt and grow, better reflecting the Leavenworth community and attracting tourists. The contract itself has some minor changes from the previous year. One item of note is that O'Neil lost their staff member who was working on the financials. Rather than have O'Neil utilize a subcontractor, we decided to bring that portion in-house this year, so our finance department will take on that work. We've always tracked the expenditures and the reporting, but this will make it easier. We can run it out of our reporting systems and the reports will look like other city reports. The total contract amount is $73,000. That's an increase of $1,698 from last year. The festival is included in the 2025 budget and includes $73,000 of transient guest tax funds for this contract. Staff does recommend approval of the contract. Both the event manager and myself are available if you have any questions.
I don't know if I have any questions, but I just wanted to say that I think that O'Neil has managed this festival very well over the last few years. And, you know, I'm looking here through her listing and the onsite management, she is there literally all the time during that weekend and keeping on top of everything. And it's difficult, having done festivals myself, it's very difficult to do. And I'm very happy to have a professional working with us on this.
So you said that they lost the staff, but we're picking that up. But yet their fees still went up?
So what we had last year in the contract was $68,002 as event management. We paid an additional $3,300 for financial management. So at the end of the day, yes, we are taking on additional work in-house. Honestly, though, it makes it a little easier for us rather than we had to go back and approve and double check. This way, the approval process is built in, so there's some efficiencies there. But yes, the overall amount is increasing from last year and we are taking on the financial management, so that's accurate.
Is she, are they going to be at the working, they're going to be at the meeting this evening?
We'll have O'Neil Events Management at the Convention and Visitors Bureau Advisory Board meeting that's focused on Camp Leavenworth. That's next week.
Okay. Okay. I just want to make sure that the opinions of the community are heard that, and I think we've talked about that, so just want to make sure that they receive that.
And I think, you know, everyone here knows, but it's helpful just to kind of reiterate that the festival is done under the direction from the city commission. So that's where we get our policy and our direction, and staff works with the event manager to carry that out.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. O'Neil, the only thing that I have a special request for, when the Chiefs win the Super Bowl, can you bring some of the players down to Camp Leavenworth?
I can't promise that, but I will take note.
Yeah. It'd be awesome. Special viewing, maybe.
Yeah, I love the work that she does and, like I said, she's an expert in her field, has the experience, and she's very personable. I make a connection with the citizens and the community, so I definitely support it.
Awesome.
I'm on it.
I don't think I've ever met her, so I, other than being right here, so I'd like to do the know. Okay, so any other questions? Do you have one? All right. You're like, mm-mm.
I have no questions.
Okay.
I know that she's the pro.
She is a pro.
And it would be very, very difficult, if at all possible, and I don't think it is, to gather a bunch of people who want to volunteer to do this. You know, I just don't think it's possible to find people that have the talent and certainly not the connections that Ms. O'Neil has, so...
Absolutely. All right, well, we'll begin voting then. I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll move approval of the contract with O'Neil Events and Marketing to manage the 2025 Camp Leavenworth Festival for $73,000.
All right. We'll begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 All right. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is the Consider Award of a Bid for 2025 Pavement Management Program Mill and Overlay.
The item tonight is to consider a possible award of the Mill and Overlay portion of the 2025 Pavement Management Program for 2025. The streets were evaluated using both actual field observation and our pavement condition index, or PCI. Based on this evaluation, a final list of streets is determined for the Mill and Overlay Program. Starting in 2024, the city commission authorized the use of sales tax for the annual pavement management program. The components of the 25 program include both a Mill and Overlay and minor upgrades to a city parking lot. The Mill and Overlay Program for 25 includes city streets highlighted on the map you have in your packet as well as on the monitors. Inspection will be done by city staff. The project plans were prepared by Benish and the projects were advertised for bid in the Leavenworth Times and Adrexel Technologies. Bids were opened on January 16th and bid results are shown. We had five companies that bid. McInney Paving was the low bidder and didn't meet all bidding requirements. The prior work by McInney for the city was completed within the timeframe and specifications. The company has done numerous projects for other cities in Kansas and Missouri. Work is expected to begin in March, and they have 90 days to complete the project. The city commission generally awards a contract to the lowest bidder if the bid is less than the engineer's estimate and his evaluation by the city indicates the award will be in the best interest of the city. The 2025 budget for the pavement management program is $2.1 million in the CIP. Low bid for the project was $1.169 million. The engineer's estimate for the base bid was $1.5. So all five bidders were actually under the engineer's estimate. With the numbers received, we also had bid three alternates. And so even awarding the three alternates, the total base bid plus alternates is $1,384,543.27. Typically on projects like this, we find some things that weren't anticipated, so we do ask for a 5% contingency on the project for $69,000. So the total Mill and Overlay budget for 2025 would be $1,453,770.27. Staff does recommend the city commission authorize the mayor to sign a construction services contract for the 25 Pavement Management Program Mill and Overlay with McInney Paving for the base bid and alternates in the amount of $1,384,000. paving for the base bid and alternates in the amount of $1,384,543.27, with an additional 5% contingency to cover issues that arise in the field. And Justin and I are here today to answer any questions that you may have. Justin is the project manager.
Hi, Justin. You have any questions, anyone? Commissioners?
We're good.
Commissioner Martin, do you have anything?
Uh, no, no, ma'am.
Okay.
Glad to see you in under estimated costs.
All right, if you don't have any questions, I'll go ahead and take a motion.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign a construction services contract for the 2025 PMP Mill Overlay Program with McInnanye Paving for the base bid and alternates in the amount of $1.3, $1,384,543.27, with an additional 5% contingency to cover issues that arise in the field.
All right. All right, it's been seconded. We'll go ahead and start the voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries. All right, next up, the 2025 pavement management program granite seal.
Again, thank you. As mentioned, this is to consider bids for the granite seal portion of the pavement management program. As with the mill and overlay, the streets were evaluated using both field observation and the pavement condition index. It is important to protect our streets that are in fair to good condition, and surface seals help preserve the pavement and extend its useful life. Applying a surface seal at the appropriate time or keeping the good roads good is significantly less expensive than waiting for the pavement to degrade further, or a mill and overlay or reconstruction is required. There are several different types of surface seals. The city has used something called Pressure Pave. We've used micro-surfacing and granite seals over the last several years. The granite seals have held up fairly well, but the jury is still out on the micro-surfacing that was done in 2022 and 2023. Based on this, the city bid granite seal for 2025. The granite seal program for 25 includes the streets highlighted in your packet, as well as on the monitor. Benish did prepare the project plans, and bids were opened on January 16th. We did receive two bids, one from Vance and one from Bettis. However, the bid from Bettis did not contain the required documentation and was not read. Vance Brothers was the low bidder and didn't meet all bidding requirements. Vance Brothers has completed sealing projects for the city in previous years, and the company has done numerous projects in other cities in both Kansas and Missouri. Work is expected to begin in March and again be completed within 90 calendar days. The city commission generally awards a contract to the lowest bidder if the bid was less than the engineer's estimate. In this case, the bid from Vance was higher than the engineer's estimate, however, we feel the bid was reasonable. The 2025 budget for pavement management, as stated before, is $2.1 million. When you combine this bid with the mill and overlay and 2026 pavement management engineering work, we're at $2.024 million, so just under the $2.1 million. So staff does recommend the city commission authorize the mayor to sign a construction services contract with Vance Brothers for the 2025 pavement management program granite seal project in the amount of $470,903.14. And again, Justin and I are here to answer any questions, and we do have a representative from Vance here today if you have any questions for them.
Yeah, this granite seal now, okay, it's holding up pretty good, you said. It's not like, and it looks like we're putting it mostly on streets that have curbs and gutters.
We had a problem with asking.
So we don't have stuff falling off the edge.
Put it on cul-de-sacs?
Yeah.
Because the turning movements within those cul-de-sacs kind of did some damage to that.
Right.
So we're limiting what we do on cul-de-sac.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that. And it looks like all of them are flat streets. They're not like, at least the ones I'm seeing here, anyway. They're not like my street that where the stuff all goes off on the side, falls down in the ditch. Yeah, right.
You've got kind of a rural section, open ditches on the sides, so the pavement's kind of sloughing off there on the edges.
Kind of, yeah, okay. Okay, just checking on that. I know, I know that was an issue before, and I think, I think you had talked about you were gonna make sure that it was on streets that that one happened. Thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions for Vance or for Justin?
Nope.
No? Okay. Well, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
I move that the city commission authorize the mayor to sign a construction services contract with Vance Brothers for the 2025 PMP Granite Seal Project in the amount of
Second.
Yeah, okay. All right, we'll begin voting with Commissioner Hingala.
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries, five to zero. All right. Next up is Consider Approval of Final Change Order and Acceptance of Construction for Four Street Improvement Projects.
Just to give a little background, the Four Street Improvements were originally planned as a joint city and KDOT project. Bids for that project were opened by KDOT in December of 2023, and the bids were higher than both the budget and engineer's estimate. In addition to the bid costs, project inspection, anticipated change orders, and future landscaping would have pushed the project to nearly $2 million per block. Based on direction received during the December 2023 commission meeting, the city notified KDOT that we would not be moving forward with the project as designed. City staff worked with our design consultant, BHC, to arrive at a modified design scope for a project that would provide the needed upgrades to the street while limiting the subsurface replacement of the sanitary and stormlines. The revised scope focused on reducing all construction ready to cost. On January 9th, 2024, the city commission authorized the mayor to sign a redesign contract with BHC. The redesign left the street at its current width, but provided for a mill and overlay of the pavement from Choctaw to Seneca, along with reconstruction of the Cherokee Delaware and Shawnee intersection. ADA upgrades at all intersections within the project boundaries were made, and the pavement was striped for three lanes per the original design. On June 11th, the city commission approved a contract with Line and Weaver Construction for the Four Street project between Choctaw and Seneca. Construction began on July 9th with substantial completion on November 15th of this year, of 2024, excuse me, minus the traffic signals. The street was open for traffic on November 15th with unrestricted flow on Four Street and stop signs controlling cross-street traffic movements. Traffic signals were put into operation December 23rd, 2024, and the contractor has been working to make final timing adjustments. I think that actually occurred today.
Today.
So they are all talking to each other and are up and functioning. The initial purchase order for construction for the project on June 11th was $3,145,630. The city realized that the project of this magnitude through our downtown would likely run into significant unforeseen issues. As a result, the city commission authorized the city manager to approve change orders up to $315,000 or 10% of that original bid. During the course of the project, numerous challenges arose. These challenges included voids under the driving surface and around manholes, staries and below-grade storefronts, as well as significantly more concrete driving surface that needed to be removed and replaced. While staff knew that we would find things we hadn't accounted for, the amount of additional work was above that 10% from the original bid. We provided a list of additions and reductions. We ran over on line items about $259,000. Other line items, we actually saved $294,000. Project change orders with things that were not on the plans was $497,000. So the final change order before you tonight is for $430,742.7. The net impact of all increases and decreases for the project was 14.7% over the original bid. The revised project total is $3,608,747.83. The final change order being presented to the city commission is for $430,742.7. This will allow the final pay application to be processed. However, the city will continue to withhold retainage until the traffic signals are fully operational, and we do a 30-day burn-in period on those to make sure they work. The city commission does review change orders above previously authorized amounts. In addition, the city commission usually makes a formal acceptance of construction projects of this type and magnitude. Once a project is accepted, the city issues a notice of acceptance, and that's when the warranty period starts. The staff does recommend the city commission approve a final change order for Four Street and grant acceptance of the project, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So were a lot of these changes, not changes, but other problems under the street, under the more concrete, more pavement? I hear you say a little bit about that, but.
So like, there's, there's one of the storefronts, a picture that we ran into on Long Four Streets, and we wanted to keep that storefront there. And so the repair is on top of that. Actually, the contractor came in, and this one actually saved us money, because what was shown on the plans was a certain type of repair. The contractor proposed a different repair method, which was approved by the engineer and the structural engineer on the project. And so this was actually one of the areas that we had reduced cost. Things that, again, that we didn't anticipate, you know, when you're uncovering sidewalks, I think someone could have been going out and saw this. These are expensive. We left those intact, but we covered those up, so we had to bridge over that opening and make sure that sidewalk was structural. So a lot of things like this, and when we milled off the asphalt or we were looking at the concrete pavement, there were a lot of issues with that old concrete. Some of that concrete was just bad. People had been driving on it, but I mean, it was, it was falling apart. We also, when we removed some of those, we looked underneath, and you would see a void underneath the pavement.
Yeah.
I mean, you could see a rod underneath there, and it's like, oh, it doesn't touch nothing.
Yeah.
And we didn't want to put asphalt on top of that, because that was going to be a failure. We ran into all these things that there's really no way to know going into construction. We just knew we'd find things, so.
Did you find any relics?
If we found relics, nobody told us.
No.
So there's a kind of an aerial view taken by a drone of construction of one of the intersections and segments. Concrete was placed in different quadrants on different days. That's another view of a completed intersection. And like here's, it'd be Delaware looking northbound. We're very pleased with the project. This is a project we'll probably submit for an award, and we thought it turned out really, really well.
It really, really did.
Really did. The brick looks so nice.
I have heard a lot of, a lot of really nice comments from people saying, they, they don't even seem to realize that it's only one lane going north and one lane going south with a turn lane in the middle. What they've seemed to realize is, yeah, it's a whole lot easier to drive up the street now, you know, because it's a wider lane.
And with the signals now talking to each other today, we do expect, you know, and the old signals were timed, and so if you're lucky, you made through two, but you typically make through that third one. The hope is with the way that time, and like I said, we'll have to tweak it, but we think the traffic flow will be much, much better.
Good, that's important. All right, commissioners, have any questions? Commissioner Martin, are you okay?
Yep, okay in here.
All right. Well, with that, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to consider the change order.
I move to approve the final change order for the Four Street project in the amount of not to exceed $430,742.7 and grant acceptance of the project.
Second. Second.
Motion's made. Second, we'll begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries. All right, let's talk about some front-end rubber tire loader. Thank you, Justin.
Justin says, I'm getting out of here.
He's like, that's not me.
So the rubber tire loader is considered a purchase of a 2025 rubber tire loader in the amount of $213,155. In the 2025 CIP, the solid waste division budgeted $214,000 for the front-end rubber tire loader to replace the 2001 currently in use. I do provide a couple pictures, and you're packing it up on the screen of the current loader. The picture on the right is inside the cab, so it's easy to get out if there's a problem. You just fall through the floor.
Literally fall through the floor.
Right. The loader is used a lot at our brush site to move debris and deter material for compost. It's also used for loading de-icing materials during winter events and picking up moving pipe and inlet structures, along with numerous other uses. The city typically uses cooperative purchasing, if possible, when procuring equipment. Sourcewell develops RFPs for national competitive solicitations that meet or exceed local requirements. It has the benefit of reducing administrative costs, eliminating duplication of effort, and lowering prices. The bid from Foley does include a 12-month unlimited hour standard warranty. We also bid a extended 60-month warranty with 5,000 hours, including powertrain, hydraulic, technician, and travel. Again, the 2025 CIP did include $214,000 for this loader. With the extended warranty, the total cost is $213,155, which is just under the budget. Staff plans to keep the existing equipment to load salt, as it is already rusted to a point, or it has little to note. So staff does recommend the city commission approve the purchase of a 2025 92614 wheel loader for $213,155 from Foley Equipment, and they're located in Kansas City. And Becky and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
So this is 24 years old, is that right, 2001?
2001, yeah.
Yeah.
Can you put like a board over that so their feet don't?
I would say some of our guys chew, so it's kind of nice.
Oh, it's just. It is spit down. I love your honesty. That's awesome. Okay, anybody have questions for Becky?
Not really. Sounds like you need it.
Yeah, definitely.
Have you test-driven it? Have you had the opportunity to go out there and check it out?
No, he has it on the lot, so we'll have it in like a week or two.
Oh, that's good.
Quick turnaround.
I think Jermaine wants to go out there.
Check it out, yes, yes, you're more than welcome.
Yeah, call us when you get it, so we can. All right, I'll take a motion to award this.
I move to approve the purchase of 2025 926-14 wheel loader for not to exceed $213,155 from Foley Equipment.
Second? All right, it's been, motion's made in second. We'll begin, we'll begin voting with Commissioner Martin, please.
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes. All right, next up is the compact truck loader.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. This is one that you have test-driven before.
Ah.
Flipping tires, if I remember right. And this one is a 2025 265 compact loader in the amount of $89,617. The street department did budget $89,000 for the loader in the 2025 CIP to replace a 2008 that we currently use. The track loader or skid loader is a piece of equipment that is used frequently to assist in moving materials, loading and placing hot asphalt, milling asphalt, pavement sweeping, and using with the 2024 pavement shed that we purchased last year. The city typically uses, as mentioned before, cooperative purchasing. We're doing the same with this. The bid from Foley includes a standard warranty of 24 months and 2,000 hours. They also have an extended 48-month, 2,000-hour, which includes powertrain, hydraulics, technician, and travel. As stated, the CIP includes funding in the amount of $89,000. With the extended warranty, the total cost is $89,617, or $617 over the CIP amount. Staff does plan to sell the 2008 loader on Purple Wave. We will definitely recruit more than the $617. The staff does recommend the city commission approve the purchase of a 2025 265-05X2C compact track loader for $89,617 from Foley Equipment. And again, myself and Becky can answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner, any questions?
I want one of those from my backyard.
Nope.
Well, it's for sale. It's one for sale. You can go buy it. You and Jermaine can go in Habsys. All right, no questions? All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the city commission approve. I move that the City Commission approve the purchase of a 2025 265-05X2C compact track loader for not to exceed $89,617 from Foley Equipment in Kansas City.
Second.
All right. Motion's main second. We'll start voting with Commissioner Hingala.
Aye.
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 All right. Motion passes. All right. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move to the consistent agenda. Commissioner Martin, that's you.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do move to approve the claims for January 10th, 2025 through
January 23rd, 2025, in the amount of $1,681,526.87. Net amount for payroll number one effective January 10th, 2025, in the amount of $436,778.21. No pleas and fire pension.
All right. Thank you.
Second.
All right. Motion's main second. We'll begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 All right. Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Do you have anything for us?
Melissa has asked me to update you on a couple of things real quick. First of all, the newsletter is coming out this week, so keep your eyes peeled for that. Second, I think we had an incorrect date on the spring cleanup. I wanted to verify or clarify that the spring cleanup is April 26th, which I believe is a Saturday. Is that correct? So wanted to, we will be sure and obviously update that on the website and Facebook and all that.
Is it still the same, like we're doing? People clean up, spring, get teams?
We're still working on it.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get it together.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all I have. Melissa, any questions?
Any other questions for Scott?
Nope.
All right. Do you have anything? No? Okay. Commissioner Martin, you're up. Do you have anything for this week?
Uh, no, just hope the Chiefs can do a three-peat and wish everybody the best and God bless.
Thank you. May I approach him?
I don't have anything for tonight.
All right. Commissioner Hingala?
Just enjoy the sort of warmer weather, you know, I hope, and other than that, enjoy and God bless.
Commissioner?
God bless and have a great week.
All right. I don't think everything, I think trash is back on schedule. Yes.
For the most part.
For the most part.
We were a little behind yesterday because some, unfortunately, the Monday route did get hit hard the last few weeks, and so it took some time getting caught up on that. I think we're slowly getting caught up this week.
Okay.
I'll take my clap back.
Good. Oh, take your clap back. I just want to bring up something really funny.[1746.42]